It's now called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors.
It's not seven yet?
No, it's not seven o'clock.
Pardon me.
Another meeting law violation. Filing it.
Another 30 seconds. The City Council will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim.
President.
Joseph Camara.
Here.
Stephen Camara.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Valerie LeBeau.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Berberis.
Here.
President Ponti.
If everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you and a salute to the flag.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President.
Consensus C3.
If I may, and I'm sure it's just oversight, but I think it'd be appropriate to have a moment of silence for the passing of one of our colleagues, former colleagues of several of us, Councilor Alves.
Yes, thank you, Counselor.
His memory is one that will hold dear.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We have a communication from the mayor and proposed ordinances. The first, Item 1A, is to amend salary schedule for non-union employees.
Motion to refer to ordinance would be appropriate.
So moved.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 1B is a request to amend the salary schedule adjustment, and there is a list of positions that are attached to this.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Councilor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And lastly is the salary amendment for rates of increase.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 2 is a communication from Corporation Council and the Home Rule petition authorizing employees of the city of Fall River the ability to apply with Retirement Board to purchase credible service for military service.
Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt is made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion, Councilor in Seat 5, Council Vice President LeBeau.
So this is the amendment?
Counselor in Seat 5, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Gave me the ayes.
Counselor in Seat 5. So the clerk just passed out an amended version that we went over with Corporation Council today. It was just a couple of words that have changed, and if anyone needs Corporation Council, he said he was fine with this. So it's just second sentence, active member, where before it was just member. On the effective day of this act, we put in Section 1B, the Fall River Retirement Board should provide notice of the provisions of this act to all employees of the city of Fall River, so they will let everybody know because prior to that, there wasn't anybody letting anyone know. And then Section 2, the word "effect" in between "take" and "upon."
Do you yield, Counsel?
Yield.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt the amendment?
Motion to adopt the amendment has been made by Councilor Long, seconded by Councilor Stephen Camara. On the amendment, discussion, Councilor in Seat 1, Councilor Kadim.
Just a question, more of a legal question. So it's going to be a Home Rule petition, so Section 1B, the Retirement Board is a separate entity. Does this really? I just want to make sure that we...
Is there a motion to waive the rules?
It's a motion.
Motion to waive the rules is made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Judge Macy.
My question is solely, just wanted to make sure that the Fall River Retirement Board will be notified once this is done, and we can force them. I mean, it says "shall," that the Home Rule petition does give us the ability to force the Retirement Board to actually notify all the active members.
Basically, Counselor, I reviewed it for language. I have no reason to believe that all the i's won't be dotted and the t's crossed because as, well, I don't know if you know, but as at least Councilor LeBeau knows, it's been amended at least once to be more inclusive. And I think the most recent amendment is that the Retirement Board will notify all city employees. So I'm sure that those matters, if they need to be taken care of, will be. I'll double-check with the city clerk to make sure that whatever needs to happen happens.
Can I just offer one amendment, that the city Human Resource Office would also notify in the paychecks, just put a letter on the, all the employees' paychecks?
I don't...
Can I make that amendment? Just, I just want to be sure that every active member receives some type of notification, that's all. Not suggesting that the Retirement Board wouldn't do that, but just, just in case.
There's an amendment made by Councilor Kadim to make sure that there is a corresponding letter or memo attached with the paychecks. It's been made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by?
Second.
Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion on that amendment. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. On the original amendment that was before, so we have yet to vote on, any further discussion on that amendment? Made by Council Vice President LeBeau. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'm sorry, Consensus C4, Councilor Kilby.
I just wanted to quickly congratulate Councilor LeBeau to my left and Mr. Burns for collaboratively working together to get this done. I think it's just a wonderful gesture, especially on the eve of Memorial Day. Congratulations.
Well said, Counselor. Thank you. Motion to adopt is amended, probably be appropriate at this time?
Motion to adopt is amended.
Motion to adopt is amended has been made by Council Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 3 is the report of the Special City Charter Committee.
Motion to refer to ordinance would be appropriate.
So moved.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Kadim.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. The ayes have it.
The point of order.
Consensus C4.
Throw the clerk to the secretary that this be added to the two pieces that are being or any pieces that are sent to ordinance tonight be included in our meeting. Is that possible? The upcoming meeting?
When's your meeting?
Thursday, please.
Thursday?
Can we get in?
Madam Clerk.
You can amend the agenda.
You can amend the agenda, Your Honor's Chair.
You can update the agenda.
Make sure that these come in too, so we keep it going.
You can amend the agenda, Counselor, Your Honor's Chair.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Next order of business.
Item number 4 is a communication from the City Council President regarding the nomination for the appointment of a member to the Community Preservation Committee.
Just as a point of information, there individual Jason Bouchard, who's before us tonight, we're going to strike him from that because we are going to be filing another suggestion for nomination to the Historic Commission. Madam Vice President?
Yes.
Can you clarify that?
Yes, so Mr. Bouchard, we had gotten an email asking for nominations for Preservation and also Historic Commission. Mr. Bouchard was interested in Historic Commission. The clerk did check. There is a vacancy on that board as well. It was from when Mr. Dyess resigned, he resigned from both, and they're both Council President nominees. So I'd like to take him out of this pile that's with Preservation, and he would like to be on the Historic Commission.
Okay, so the two items left, the two individuals before us for nomination would be Alfred J. Lima and Alexandra Silva. We did send a corresponding email to all councilors prior to this meeting asking for a recommendation for individuals. Hearing none. I believe that was correct, Madam Clerk. Nobody really responded to that. I took it to recommend Al Lima to this post. It's a nomination before you, and if that's the so-will of this council to adopt that, so it be, and we can adopt that order. Any discussion? Any motion? Madam Clerk, is there an order before us?
Yes, Mr. President.
Can you read the order, please?
Yes. Order that the City Council hereby appoints the following individual to serve on the Community Preservation Committee, Alfred J. Lima. The term shall expire on October 28, 2020, to complete the term of Anton Dyess.
Motion to nominate and adopt the order of Alfred J. Lima.
Motion to nominate and adopt has been made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Traffic Commission making a recommendation to amend the ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a request of the city engineer to open a street less than five years old. This is at Harvard Street.
Is there a motion? Is there a reason, Madam Clerk, for this opening?
Property owner is proposing to construct a duplex with individual sewer and water services.
Is it a new construction?
Appears to be.
Consensus C1, Councilor Kadim.
Thank you. Do we, we know how old the road is. How many more years of moratorium?
Improvements are two years old, according to this letter.
It was paved in 2017.
Motion to refer to public works.
Motion to refer to public works has been made by Councilor Kadim.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Councilor Long, seconded by?
Second.
Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, just a point of order.
Consensus C1.
Alexander Silva?
Yeah.
Were we skipping him too?
There was only one opening on that.
Oh, there was only one.
Correct. Consensus C3.
You included all the people that submitted.
Correct. Consensus C3.
Since that's been raised, I didn't mention it earlier, but Mr. Lima basically told me he had submitted his name. He wanted to be sure that someone with historic preservation interest hold. But he was very happy having Mr. Silva served in that position. However, with all due respect to Mr. Lima, I think we should proceed. I've spoken to Mr. Silva. I would ask that we keep Mr. Silva's application available, that when an opening occurs either in the Preservation Committee or the Historic Commission, that he be held and considered for that position. He is very actively involved with the Preservation Society, serves as their clerk, and he's very involved also in the first building that the Preservation Society has purchased, the Dr. Fisk House on Pine Street, and he's a caretaker for that building. So he's very much committed to Fall River, and I would ask that his resume be kept on file for future appointment.
Sure, and I would also urge that we forward that, his resume and application to the mayor. Should there be any additional openings in any other boards that he may qualify in, I think he'll be an asset to any board that he does serve on as well. So, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, if I may, the Historic District Commission has another, Mr. Dyess who serves on that commission as a council appointee, and his appointment has expired. So perhaps next week, if it's the will of the council, when you are making the appointment, you may consider replacing Mr. Dyess.
However, just in terms of that, I believe there's something in ordinance committee that intends to combine the Historic Commission with the Historic District Commission into one commission.
The Historic's...
Yeah, there is. So let's get our ducks in a row prior to next Tuesday's meeting. In the meantime, Madam Clerk, if you could forward his application and resume to the mayor's office, city administrator is here, and if there's any possible openings for the use of his services and experience, I think the city would certainly benefit from that. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The ordinance that relates to the vacant building registration and fee for passage through second reading and enrollment.
So be it.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas Home Depot has invested millions of dollars in veteran-related causes, and whereas Fall River, Massachusetts veterans have created a mobile model of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, and whereas this mobile model of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier has garnered very significant positive publicity wherever it has participated in patriotic parades, and whereas the creators of the mobile model of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier are in need of financial and in-kind donations as well as support with transportation to parades for this model, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Fall River, Massachusetts proudly asks the Home Depot Corporation to support the most sacred of veterans' causes, honoring those who gave their all, Fall River's mobile model of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by?
Second.
Councilor Long. Discussion. Consensus C4, sponsor of the resolution, Councilor Kilby.
Thank you, Ms. President. Just be quickly, former City Council Daryl Gany contacted me about a week ago, I believe. He also contacted you, Mr. President, with regard to this issue. It, again, coming on the eve of Memorial Day, and I think it's a very poignant issue, and I didn't know, it was brought to my attention that our own local Veteran Forward's War Post, 486 on Bedford Street, has constructed this exact replica of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, as the resolution reads. It is the most sacred military monument. I'm sure Mr. Attorney Macy could attest to that as well. But they are in need of funding, and it was brought to my attention through Mr. Gany, and that Home Depot literally has millions of dollars that they distribute to communities such as Fall River. So simply asking for a letter to be sent to see if we can get some funding. It was explained to me something as simple as a trailer to haul the monument around the state, and it does actually state that it does represent the city of Fall River, and they, you know, they march in praisers throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it's their goal, speaking to a gentleman that are here that started this wonderful tribute, their goal is to march in a 2020 Presidential inauguration parade. So I appreciate the support, and I'll be in contact with Colleen Taylor to provide a more elaborate packet, so to speak, to this committee, and also to go through the language of maybe how the letter should be, that should be written. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything further on the resolution? Hearing none. Motion to adopt is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the police chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have license renewals for auto repair shops located at 65 Manchester Street, 801 Bay Street, and 401 Bedford Street. I'd like to mention to the council that the application for Zacu de Silva at Zac's Garage on 65 Manchester Street has been disapproved by police, fire, and the city collective.
Can we take these individually?
So be it. Individually?
Motion to take each item individually has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, can you read them individually?
So the first one is Zac's Garage, 65 Manchester Street, and that has been disapproved.
Is there a motion?
Move to the Committee on Regulation.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Regulations has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Frank Correa doing business as Mellow Service Station at 801 Bay Street.
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by?
Second.
Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And we have Jose Colazo doing business as JC Performance, 401 Bedford Street.
Move to approve the license.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The application for an auto body shop license for David Ponti doing business as Broom Motors at 387 Bedford Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by Councilor Kadim.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Stephen Camara. Discussion. No relation, by the way. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a number of claims.
Refer to Corporation.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Drain layer applications.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt and approve all drain layer licenses has been made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Councilor Stephen Camara. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 15 is an application for a structural over public way on behalf of St. Anthony of the Desert Church.
To adopt.
Motion to adopt and approve has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President.
Consensus C2, Councilor Camara.
I believe the community maintenance had the facilities, Facilities Maintenance Department helping them with securing that.
Tomorrow, next day, this week?
I would think that they can get it done. I can follow up with them tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel. Anything further? Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
We have minutes of the City Council meeting.
Will we adopt the minutes, 16, 17, and 18?
Motion to take items 16, 17, and 18 together has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is the motion to adopt?
Adoption, 16, 17, and 18.
Motion to adj, motion to adopt the City Council minutes, items 16, 17, and 18, has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas the current owner of the former Nathaniel B. Borden School on Morgan Street has filed for a permit to demolish this historic building, and whereas the filing of this permit has triggered the city of Fall River's so-called demolition ordinance, which delays...
Madam Clerk, before you continue, the committee had regulations pending recommendations?
The item was tabled in committee.
Both of them were correct.
Yes.
Yep, just one. I apologize. Thank you. You can continue. Sorry.
And whereas the filing of this permit has triggered the city of Fall River's so-called demolition ordinance, which delays demolition for a period of six months, and whereas this delay is intended to consider any and all options which might prevent demolition of Fall River's historic properties, and whereas the Preservation Society of Fall River and other preservationists are pursuing alternatives to the demolition of this historic property, and whereas the city of Fall River, through votes of both its Real Estate Committee and the full council, voted to sell this property with the intent of the new owners utilizing the building and the adjacent parking lot, now therefore be it resolved that the Fall River City Council call on its Real Estate Committee to convene with representatives of the city administration, city Historic Commission, Preservation Society of Fall River, and the current owner of the aforementioned property or his designee to discuss any possible alternative that might prevent the demolition of this historic downtown Fall River former school building.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Kilby. Discussion, the sponsor of the resolution, Counselor in Seat 3, Councilor Camara.
Just briefly, it's clearly important that Fall River continue to embrace its history and support its historical properties not being demolished. We've lost too many historic properties through the years. The demolition ordinance, which was adopted by the City Council, its very purpose is to focus and put the spotlight on the prospect of a historic property being demolished. That's the purpose of the ordinance, and its additional purpose is for the community to pursue all alternatives that are available to consider the alternative to demolition. So I know that there are other groups that are meeting on this matter, and I think considering that the Fall River Real Estate Committee and the City Council itself voted to sell this building with the idea that it would be, continue to be used as a structure in downtown Fall River, that it's worthy of consideration and discussion at a committee meeting of real estate, a committee on which I'm a member, and two of us, Councilor Joseph Camara and Chairman Leo Pelletier, I'm sure will give it, do attention.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Counsel. Consensus C1, Councilor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we also just get forwarded to us, I know when this goes out to bid, these buildings go out to bid, you know, part of the proposal is what they plan on doing. Can we have what the winning bid, whoever that was, if we can see that plan that was submitted to the Real Estate Committee? Forwarded to us. I'm just curious if they mentioned anything in the proposal of potential demolition or what they might have submitted for a proposal for that building in particular?
We can get that also. I'm not sure if that, a piece of real estate specifically has changed additional hands since the Real Estate Committee has granted it. Consensus C4, Counselor Kadim.
I was chairman of the Real Estate Committee at the time. I don't recall specifically, it was a number of years ago, what the use was, but I could tell you it was not demolition. I know that, so, and that, it's my understanding it hasn't changed hands, so.
Fair enough.
I think it's a good resolution, and we need, it needs discussion.
Sure, and I'm sure the clerk will share this information with all of us as soon as she has it. She can email it to the council. Full, thank you, Councilor Kadim. Anything further? Hearing none. The motion to adopt has been made and seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Lastly, we have a communication from the Fall River Pride Committee requesting hanging banners at Government Center.
Move approval will be granted.
Motion to adopt has been made and approve has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by?
Second.
Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion. Hearing none. Consensus C4, Councilor Kilby.
Just one question. Personally, I have no problem against this, but is there, do we have a prohibition of outside agencies posting banners on public property?
Yeah, there's a...
Is that...
The council has the ability to authorize placement of banners.
I yield, thank you.
Anything? Counselor in Seat 2, Councilor Camara.
Just curious, how long are the banners going to be up for? Is this a one-time authorization, or is that a continual thing? I'm just curious. Usually when people want to put a banner over a public way, there's a certain timeline.
Counselor, their event is being held on Sunday, so it's only up for a short time.
Thank you.
Thank you. You yield? Consensus C3, Councilor Camara.
I can shed some information. I have met with the committee. The intent is to have the banners up during the festival. The festival is from 11 to 4 on Sunday at the Government Center, and the building, and the banners would not be over any public way, they would just be on the Government Center building itself.
That's on the public way?
Well, it's not over a street, but it is on top of, it is hanging on public property, but not over a public way.
Thank you, Counsel.
And it would be Sunday from 11 to 4.
Thank you.
And the whole, and the public is invited to be there.
Thank you. Motion that has been, to approve, has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're going to do a brief recess, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Brief recess. Fall River City Council, now we'll be back to order. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, we have the miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through ordination.
Move of passage through ordination. Second.
Move through passage through ordination has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And lastly, the vacant building registration and fee ordinance for passage through ordination.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, the final ordination has been made by Councilor Long, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Councilor Stephen Camara, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
See you next week.